Good evening. Today is Monday, August 4th, 2025. It's 5:30 PM. And tonight, first up, Agenda Item A, City Update by Brian McCain, Chief of Staff.
Thank you, sir. This Saturday, August 9th, at El Central del Quinco Sol, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM, there will be a K through 12 school supply giveaway while supplies last. Free haircuts by the Works Express Cuts, and students must be present to receive the supplies. Now, a couple PD updates. Thank you to all who attended and supported the 2025 Neighborhood Safety Night last Saturday night, including sponsors Anke Roofing, A1 Barricade, Pueblo West Tantanani, Night Magic Entertainment, Home Depot, and Lowe's. Reminder for everyone to like and follow the Public Police Department's social media pages to receive all the department and crime updates with weekly crime stats and crime prevention tips, as well as notification of upcoming events, arrests, and more. You can schedule a crime prevention through Environmental Design or CPTED Evaluation by emailing CPTED@puueblo.us. So if you're a business or even a homeowner, you want to email that, they could come in and they could help you basically set up your place to prevent crime. Learn more about Neighborhood Watch and how to start a group in your area by emailing neighborhoodwatch@puueblo.us. I wanted to give everyone a yearly update on our PD and Code Enforcement team since January 1st, 2025, through the end of last year, the end of last week. So compared to last year at this time, then to July, this year robbery is down 46%, homicide is down 53%, SA is down 27%, Part 1 Persons is down 14%, Arson is down by 16%, auto theft is down by 20%, burglary is down by 4%, theft and larceny is down by 7%, and Part 1 Property is down 10%, with total Part 1 11%. And that's compared to the end of July in 2024 versus this year. With Code Enforcement, I wanted to give you an update of everything that they've accomplished this year from January 1st till the end of last week. Their complaint and violations handled, so 1,799 litter, 1,400 litter removal and storage, 2,158 weeds, 670 junk vehicles, 584 zoning, 383 international property maintenance, 199 property board up, and 824 other complaints and violations. The abatements performed, 214 were litter, 158 are weeds, 51 board ups, and 19 graffiti. Case status as of last week, 1,096 notices of violations were issued with 472 summons violations issued. Solid waste, so this is in addition to some of the numbers I gave out last week and the week before with the municipal court. So this is just code enforcement. 434.3 tons of landfill, including 993 tires picked up. Our dice team last week, from July 24th through the 30th, had 28 calls for service, 16 community-oriented policing calls, issued 17 citations, two trespass notices, and three outside warrant arrests. And then finally, some good news out of fire. Everyone that has taken the EMT test as a new recruit has passed their tests and are on the floor responding to calls. So as you remember, 13 graduated in June. Seven personnel were promoted to Emergency Medical Officer this week, and one individual was promoted to Assistant Chief this week. And that concludes my report.
Okay, any questions, comments from council? Okay, let's move on to Item Agenda B, Colorado State Fair. We have Andrea Wiesenmeyer, Colorado State Fair General Manager, 15-minute presentation. Welcome, Andrea. Please turn on the mic. Thank you.
Good evening. There we go. So thank you to all of you for having us here to talk about the fair. We are 18 days away, I believe, and so things are in full swing. We're very excited for 2025 and all of the great things that have been happening. So I'm here to update you, give you some fun facts and information, and off we'll go. Most of you have not met me, so very quickly, I am the new GM at the state fair. I've been here about nine months. My husband and I moved to town shortly after I took the position, and our two little dogs are living life here, so we're very excited to be in Pueblo. Oh, it works. I wanted to really briefly touch on the Capitol campaign and master plan that we've been working on. We've done some really, really great things in the last couple of years, and they've been able to make some huge improvements prior to me coming on. In here, you'll see the plaza, which I think is a great improvement for the fairgrounds, both visually and throughout grounds for us to be able to utilize them. Additionally, Gate 5 off of Prairie is a great improvement that we've been able to do. Our next large step is going to be the Sam Brown Family Pavilion. It is a state-of-the-art facility designed to host livestock shows, horse shows, but also really focusing on community and being able to host athletic tournaments, different events, and things throughout the year. When we're looking at spaces as we go forward, it's really, really important for us to not just build things that are for one use, but really multi-use facilities. That brings us to our 2025 State Fair and the theme, Growing the Tradition, because that's really what we're doing here. So we hope that you're able to join us August 22 through September 1 for the state fair. Some things that are new, some new things this year. Adventureland, Exceptional Rodeo, Sensory Day, State Fair Foundation Cornhole Tournament. And we'll cover a number of these things here in the next couple of slides. Also want to talk about a few improvements that we're doing on grounds outside of large Capitol or upgrades to buildings that are existing. So benches and picnic tables, you're going to see new seating on grounds. That's something that we've been working on for a couple of years, and you'll continue to see additional benches and picnic tables. We feel like creature comforts, seating, shade, bathroom cleanliness, those sorts of things are so important. And so that's something we continue to focus on. A 4H Dining Hall and Auditorium both got some great updates. If you have a chance to pop in there and see the 4H exhibits during the fair, they're going, you're going to see a completely reimagined auditorium. The ceiling has been taken up, and it's a beautiful, beautiful space that we're excited about, not only for fair, but really for year-round community events and rentals. We have updated air conditioning in the Palace of Agriculture, so hopefully you're going to feel a little cooler in that space. After the fair, we'll continue to do some things in there. We'll finish roofing. We're also going to, as that is a really great historical space, we're going to update all of the windows and really honor that historic space, but also increasing our ability to be efficient in that air conditioning. And then Kids Carnival Asphalt resurfaced. You know, something that we do after every fair is we take a look at the surveys. This year, we had over 2,000 surveys come in after the fair with recommendations, things that people want to see, things that really are going to help people have a better experience. And one of the things that came through loud and clear is that the Kids Carnival area really needed some resurfacing. And so that was something we focused on making happen here for this year's fair. Deals and discounts, something else that's very important to us is really making sure that we're finding ways for Pueblo, the surrounding community, and all of Colorado to be able to find different ways to enjoy the fair. And so you're going to see a lot of deals and discounts throughout the fair on multiple days. August 22 and 29 are both Senior Day and T-Fiber $5 Fridays. So before 5:00 PM for $5 Fridays, you're going to be able to come in for $5. You're going to get $5 food items from all of our food vendors. A really great affordable way to be able to spend a little time and see the fair. American Heroes Day, $8 off for veterans, first responders, and military. I'm really excited about some things that we're going to be doing there as part of rodeo to enhance that celebration of our American heroes. August 21st and September 1st is Kids' Day, free admission for kids 12 and under. August 22nd, Two Can Tuesday. This is something for me that's really, really special. You know, free donation with two cans of food that we're going to share with Karen Sher to help those that need it the most. August 27th, One Price Wednesday. It's going to be a great day, especially for those that are within driving distance and maybe want to come out and spend the day on One Price Wednesday. Fair admission is going to include Ranch Rodeo, Ned Ladoo Concert, and a carnival ride wristband with most of our rides included. CSU Pueblo Pack the Fair Day. Fair admission and $25 unlimited carnival ride wristband with student voucher or coupon. That also happens to be that we're going to get to help kick off the football season for CSUP. So excited about that, because that is their first home game that day. And then Colorado Lottery on Friday, August 31st, which is also Fiesta Day. $3 off fair admission with a non-winning lottery ticket. So lots of ways that you can save and come and visit the fair. Some really special days that we hope you're marking on your calendar. The 10th Annual State Fair Foundation Partners of Youth and Ag Golf Tournament is on that Friday morning. I think they still have slots available if you're a golfer. Pueblo Chamber of Commerce Legislative Barbecue is always a really big deal on that first Friday. August 23rd, one of the fan favorites is the State Fair Parade. Pretty excited. I've never gotten to participate in a state fair parade before as one of my fairs. I've always been on the end where I haven't had time to do that. So this year, I get to go be in the parade. August 25th is State Fair Foundation Exceptional Rodeo. This is an opportunity for us to partner with PDI and with the foundation to bring in kids with disabilities and allow them to interact with our rodeo contestants, our cowboys and our cowgirls and our staff, and all of those people that are part of the rodeo, and share what we love about rodeo with those kids in a way that really is one-on-one with them and gives them the ability to really participate and be part of something. So really, really excited about that addition this year. Cowboys Kickin' Cancer is always a favorite. Common Spirits has been a partner with us for over 40 years. August 26th, Colorado State Fair Junior Livestock Sale and Governor's Plate. So that's a really, really great day, a lot about the kids. And then we'll celebrate it with some really great food trucks. August 31st is the 67th Annual Fiesta Day, one of the longest-running Fiesta Days in the nation. So a really, really great day. And again, we get to be part of a parade, and anytime you're part of a parade, that's a blast. And then September 1st, the state fair opened up the fair with a golf tournament, and they're going to end it this year with their first-ever cornhole tournament. So really excited about that. And then last on that day is Sensory Day. So again, taking into account the sights, the sounds, the noises for a lot of people that really make it hard to come to the fair, we're going to create some quiet spaces, some spaces where we're going to turn the lights off and the sound down, and really allow them for a couple hours to be able to come and enjoy what all of us take for granted. Adventure Activity Land, really wanted to touch on this for free attractions. Really fun this year. We have taken what has been the Ag Pavilion and are reimagining it. It's going to have a little library, hands-on daily educational activities. Cam's Classroom will be there again. We've added an inflatable corn maze, and the Magic Bean is an ag-based magic and comedy show. And then Kids Pedal Pull Tractor Poles are going to be in that space as well. So really reimagining that space to continue to grow educational opportunities and also kind of that ag entertainment space. Beyond that, for free attractions, we have over $250,000 in free attractions. Between the PB and T-Bank Pavilion, the Pepsi Stage, and the American Amphitheater, you're going to be able to catch music, community events, all sorts of entertainment every single day of the fair. Additionally, Great American Petting Farm is back. Colorado Building and the Explore Colorado Building are both going to have Colorado entities and different things in them that we're really excited about. The Colorado Proud Farm Trail, it's one of the things and one of the reasons I'm here. When we came to visit the fair last year before I was offered the position and got to walk through the Colorado Proud Farm Trail, it is a really great interactive educational space for kids. So well-developed and just something we're really, really excited about continuing to grow. This year, we have added Rockyford Melons, so really excited about another addition in that space. Creative and Fine Arts, so in the Creative and Fine Arts area this year, we are up over 300 entries versus 24 and 80 exhibitors. So really great numbers coming forward, and there's still entries that haven't, are closed just today. So lots of really great things going on there as well. As far as other entertainment, as you're strolling grounds, you're going to be able to see the bubbler out with his bubbles and his bike. The plant guy might be a plant, or he might be a guy, so you're going to really want to watch for him. He's quite entertaining if you want to follow him around a little bit. All-American High Dive is back this year. Rock of the Robot is a nine-foot TikTok sensation robot that is going to interact with people. And then Swifty Swine Pig Races, Pig Races have been a favorite, and it's one of the things, funny enough, that have been questioned about multiple times. And lucky for us, they're back this year. For paid entertainment, you're going to see a number of things in the Big R Arena. Cooper Allen is going to follow PRCA Rodeo on Friday. Lee Bryce is going to follow PRCA Rodeo on Saturday. Clay Walker is going to follow PRCA Rodeo on Sunday. Monday, you're going to be able to join us for really cost-effective rodeo on that last night. On Wednesday, Ranch Rodeo with Ned Ladoo, and again, that is free admission that night. So you'll be able to see Ranch Rodeo, a really great concert from Ned Ladoo. Toughest Monster Trucks are going to be Friday, August 29th at 8:00 PM, and then on Saturday, August 30th at 1:00 PM. Another fan favorite, the Demo Derby is on Saturday, August 30th. And I am not going to correctly pronounce Los Huracanes del Norte. However, they are our Fiesta Day entertainment after the Los Trozos, and very excited about them. We've been hearing some great reviews. In the Southwest Motors Event Center, we're bringing Gabriel Fluffy Iglesias on that first weekend. My Generation Tour, which is The Love and Spoonful, Gary Lewis and the Playboys, and The Holly's Greatest Hits starring Terry Sylvester. It's a mouthful, but if you know anything about 60s music, there is a ton of really, really great hits there. Flow Ride It is going to be on Friday, so we're bringing in some hip hop. Back to Country on Saturday night with Russell Dickerson in the Southwest Motors Event Center. And then Sheep Trick is the Lottery Show on Sunday, August 31st. So a little bit of something for everybody, lots going on, and lots of things we're excited about.
Okay, you good?
Good, I'm good.
I thought City Clerk Marissa talked fast. That was quick. I just wanted to just throw in one thing, and the rest of the council is going to have questions, I'm sure. Is there a chance for old guys like us up here, the older ones, that we can get a printout of this? Because I have folders that I keep that I like to take with me instead of doing this stuff on my phone that I can't read anyway, but do you have printouts of this kind of stuff? That you could get, you can get the lease to me. I don't know if anybody else wants it. I want it.
We can absolutely make sure that you get some printout.
I appreciate it very much. Council, any other questions or comments from council? Council Latino?
I just want to say, welcome to Pueblo. We're excited to have you with us, and look forward to working with you, and go Colorado State Fair.
Well, thank you. I appreciate being here. Like I said, they've been doing a lot of really, really great things, and I'm just excited for those next steps.
Council Martinez?
Yeah, welcome to Pueblo. It's exciting that it's your first Colorado State Fair as the manager. One of the things that's kind of newish in the last couple of years is that Pueblo Transit will actually do a shuttle to, you know, kind of help relieve the congestion around the neighborhood around the state fair. You know, it brings a lot of people there. I know that in the past, Mr. McCain, we had a good partnership where we would, like, maybe the fair subsidized a little bit of that. Do you know if that's happening this year?
We are, so one of my mantras this year is that if it's been working and we're doing it well, we want to continue to do it, and that's one of those things that has been working well, and we want to continue to do. So yeah, we are working with everyone to make sure that that happens. Okay.
There it goes. I'm going to meet with Ben actually next week to talk about that, but so far, so good.
Great, excellent. And then a part of the fair is in my district, so I get a lot of emails from people kind of concerned about trash in their neighborhood or noise. Can you talk a little bit about specifically the trash prevention strategies that you guys are doing?
Yeah, I think trash is tough everywhere. You know, it amazes me how many people will sit down with their corn dog and their lemonade on a bench or a table, and the garbage can will be right next to them, and yet they'll leave their things right there on the table and walk away. And I think that happens additionally outside of the fairgrounds as they leave and they finish their lemonade, whatever, instead of finding a garbage can. They just toss it to the ground, and it's not something I've ever understood, but it's definitely something that we're working to mitigate. I know that we've been working really hard to partner with the city in the last couple of years to bring in some extra dumpsters and some extra spaces to make it convenient for people to be able to throw things away. And then every night after close, we do have a team of people that does focus around the fairgrounds to make sure that we're doing a sweep and trying to clean up as much of that as possible.
Outside of the gates?
Yes.
Oh, great. That's great to hear.
Yeah, we have one team that just focuses on outside of the gates and does a sweep around, as well as everybody that's working inside the gates.
Okay, great. And then for the past couple of years, we've had kind of not roll-offs, but like 10-yard dumpsters that have been in the neighborhood that I believe we're planning on doing again this year, and some street sweeping too. So hopefully between what Public Works is doing and then what your team's doing, hopefully we'll get a clean neighborhood.
Yeah, and we did meet about that last week, and I do believe that that's the intention again, which, again, the support of the city to make the fair and the area the best it can be. We want to be good neighbors. That's one of the important things for us is we're there year-round, and we understand for 11 days, it's a bit of chaos, but really hopefully very good chaos. But we also understand that it definitely inconveniences some people, and so the best neighbors that we can be, that's always our goal.
Great, thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Brett, you good? Joe, you good? I think we're good. Thank you, Andrea. Thanks. Welcome to Pueblo.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, and next up, Item Agenda C, Pueblo County Property Tax installment program. We've got Kim Archileta, Pueblo County Treasurer. Kim, welcome. You've got a 30-minute presentation. Take your time. We're good.
There it is. We're good. Okay, thank you. So hello, fellow elected councilmen and councilwomen. Thank you so much for having me this evening. So I know it's a little bit different having another elected here, but my goal is to just reach as many taxpayers as possible as elected officials. We are always talking to constituents about problems and how we can solve them. And I know property taxes is one of those with the, you know, the status of the economy and shoestring budgets in homes. Sometimes people have to choose between food or, you know, paying an electric bill. And so if I can just get the word out about how we can help, then that's what I'm going to do, and I hope that you folks find this information helpful. So first, I wanted to give a little background as to how this came to fruition. Over the past couple of years, legislation has attempted to change the normal pay schedule of property taxes. As it's, as legislation and statute reads today is you can split up your property taxes into two half-payments, or you can just choose to pay it in full. So for example, if your property taxes are $1,000, you can split up that $1,000 into two half-payments. The first $500 would be due on February 28th or 29th, if it's a leap year, and that second half payment of $500 is due by June 15th. Okay, so that's the only type of payment plan that we offer statutorily. Or if you choose to just skip the half-payment option, you can just choose to pay that in full in one lump sum, and that is due by April 30th. And once again, as we know, in this economy, budgets can be tight. And so this program is, was basically designed to kind of take that burden off of legislation to come in and try to create a plan without really understanding the full implications of their plan. For example, the one most recently was they were trying to create four payments instead of two, the last one being, I believe, September 30th. Unfortunately, that isn't going to work. There's so many issues with that. For example, school districts, school districts, you know, may not be able to meet bond payments. Fire districts may not be fully funded for heavy fire season. And so there's a lot of reasons as to why that would not work. And so I am lucky enough to sit on the Legislative Committee for the Colorado County Treasurers and Public Trustees Association. And so we said, instead of constantly fighting legislation, let's actually come up with a solution. And so that's exactly what we did. And currently, a lot of county treasurers work with a vendor called Auto Agent. Pueblo County is one of them. We've worked with Auto Agent for about 10 years. And what Auto Agent is, is they are, they're a servicer for mortgage companies. So anybody who holds a mortgage typically has an escrow account, and they send all of that money to Auto Agent. Auto Agent then sends us one lump sum for the first half and the second half of taxes. So that's pretty much a rundown of why this even came about or why we wanted to intervene and do something. And so I think it's also important to educate constituents. I don't expect people to know this. This is something I do every day, and I don't expect people to know exactly what escrow is. And so I just want to take a minute to really explain what escrow is. And so an escrow account is a dedicated account set up by a mortgage lender to manage certain property-related expenses on behalf of the homeowner. And basically, it works by them holding the funds. So whenever you pay your monthly mortgage payment, a portion of that is being deposited into an escrow account or a holding account. And so then when your taxes are due or your insurance premiums are due, they then disperse them to the proper places. So your insurance, it goes to the insurance company. Your property taxes, it comes to my office. And so of course, we know when you pay off that home, you no longer have an escrow account. Or if you're a property manager or a commercial building or a business or maybe an ag, an ag farm, and you don't have an escrow account, okay? Because you also, we have personal property taxes, right? So this can benefit so many people. And once again, I think it's important to just really start at the base and just explain what an escrow account is. And so once again, if you do not have an escrow account, most people know whether they have one or they don't. But I do have lots of new homeowners that pay their property taxes when they get their property tax bill, not knowing that they're already paying that in their monthly mortgage and that their mortgage company is going to send it to us. And so what I will say is if you have an escrow account, this will not be for you. But if you do not, stay, keep listening, because I'm going to get to the good stuff here. And so we, once again, we came together as a committee and decided, how can we help our taxpayers? How can we help them break up these payments into monthly, more manageable payments? And that's when we decided to talk to Auto Agent, because I believe, and please don't quote me, I believe 47 out of the 64 counties already use Auto Agent. So this is a real, it's just an easy transition. This comes to no cost to Pueblo County government. This is simply just a service that Pueblo County or my office is offering to our taxpayers. And so you should have two handouts with you. And what I really want to just stress the most is this payment solution is only for people who do not currently have an escrow account. Okay, that's the only qualification. The qualification is you don't have an escrow. And the only role that Pueblo County plays in this is we receive those funds, okay? So Auto Agent will disperse on first half on or before February 28th, and then they will disperse on second half on or before June 15th. And all you have to do is simply go to escrowtaxes.com, find Pueblo County. You can find your property by searching parcel number, address, or name. Then you simply enroll. This is all, the taxpayer is in complete control of this. We truly have no control. It is truly the taxpayer who is in control of setting this up. The great thing about Auto Agent is they have our data already because we currently use them. So when you find your property and you enroll, they already have a history of what your property taxes are, and they can estimate what they will be. So once you enroll, they'll figure out what your taxes are going to be. They'll estimate your monthly payments. Then you can go ahead and enroll, and that monthly payment will go to them every month, and then they will disperse that once again on first and second half. So there is a fee. To me, it is worth the peace of mind, and it is a dollar if you choose to do an ACH. So that means putting in your routing number and account number to your checking account. And then if you choose to use a debit card, it's going to be 2.5% of the amount that they're pulling for every transaction. And so once again, this is peace of mind. This offers flexibility for those that may be on a fixed income, and it's going to break that down into more manageable, bite-sized payments. Do you folks have any questions for me?
Yeah, I've got, Council Maestri.
Is this only for homeowners, Kim, or is it also for commercial?
It's anybody who does not have an escrow. So commercial, it could be a vacant lot. You know, I think of like our ag for maybe, you know, they have a really high peak of revenue coming in during harvest, and then the rest of the year, not so much. And so I think this is a good fit for them as well. But this is anyone who would just like to make, to have more manageable monthly payments. to have more manageable monthly payments. So once again, anyone who does not have an escrow account.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Okay. Well, finally, a tax collector with a heart. I haven't seen this in a long time. Are there other incentives that can really encourage them, that you, you guys are thinking about, to make them participate more? I mean, I know you have the, the breakup of the payments, I got that. But there was something we're missing in reference to other incentives to encourage, encourage them even further?
Well, like I said, I think it's, it's that peace of mind. I can't tell you how many taxpayers will pay first half, and then they forget to pay second half. And their parcel goes to tax lien sale for second half, because every unpaid parcel will go to tax lien sale. So this will help reduce any extra fees and penalties, because they will be paid on time. So once again, it's that peace of mind. We typically have, on average, about twenty-three to twenty-five hundred parcels go to tax lien sale every year. Out of that, we have roughly about eighteen hundred that are actually sold at tax lien sale, and the remainder are struck off to the county. And so once again, those fees and the interest can add up real quick. And there are people that will go years without realizing that they have a tax lien on their property, all because they didn't make, you know, whether it be a full year or a half a year. So a bill that could have originally started as a thousand dollars is now twelve or thirteen hundred dollars. And so I believe that is a benefit as well.
Okay. Council Maestri, anything else? Well, it's like, this is a sign of good government. I appreciate you bringing this forward.
And like I said, I, I really do encourage everyone who is listening online, at home, people here in chambers, to you fellow electeds, is, you know, community is taking care of your neighbors. Having those conversations, whether it be with your neighbors, with your family members, with colleagues. I just love to spread the word that there is help. And, you know, property taxes is always a, a huge kind of hot topic. And if I can help at least ten people, I know that I've, I've done my job. I know that it's gonna take a while for this program to kind of catch on and for people to learn about it and know about it. But once again, I just encourage everyone who is listening today to have those conversations.
Council Maestri.
I'm sorry, just one more question. So when they go to start the monthly payment program, is that after they've already paid their lump sum? And are they escrowing in the year?
Correct, so it would be arrears, correct. So, of course, you're always billed in arrears. So next year's taxes, so if you enroll today, they'll disperse the February twenty-eighth and June fifteenth. So next year's taxes, it's the twenty-twenty-five taxes made payable in twenty-twenty-six. So of course, if you create an account and enroll in January, you're gonna have a pretty large, you know, you're, you have a lot of catching up to do. So of course, the sooner you can enroll, so this did just go live mid-January. And so the sooner you can enroll, the smaller those payments are going to be. And like I said, all, I do have the, the handout for you folks, and then the frequently asked questions as well. But once again, the nice thing is that the taxpayer is in complete control of this. We truly, we, we don't receive any type of notifications when somebody enrolls. We truly only receive the end payment. So that is, our role is just simply receiving that money in a mass payment.
I think, are we good?
Does that help, you know, build interest in the account for the county? Like, is, is there some revenue?
No, we truly, there is no, no revenue. So since this is at a, a no fee to Pueblo County, the way this service makes their money is through the fees. So that's basically how they get paid, is charging the dollar or the two and a half percent. But yeah, Pueblo County does not receive any type of revenue or anything of that nature.
Do you save money rather than to take payments from, on a, you know, annually or biannually? Or when you do accept tax payments, do you have to pay a fee for that service?
Only if you're using our online payment system. So we do have an online payment system, which is my.pueblocounty.gov. And so there are fees associated with that. But, I mean,
I'm, I'm just saying, does the county have some sort of benefit? Because I mean, if it's a cost savings to where you don't have to pay your part of receiving the online payments much, and plus the taxpayer having to pay a fee.
Absolutely. There's, you know, that's one less payment that my tax collectors have to process. And I think the real win, right, is that we don't want to see people lose their homes. We don't want to see people get tax liens on them. And so once again, if people enroll, it's that ease, that peace of mind. And once again, the benefit is, that's one less tax, that's one less parcel we have to put into advertising. That's one less parcel that goes to tax lien sale. That's one less payment that my office has to process. Because, you know, we process, we have over a hundred thousand parcels. And, and processing those payments is, is very timely. And so I'm all about efficiencies. And so if we can just streamline and make things as automated as possible, of course, we serve everyone and we will take any type of payment. So of course, you're still more than welcome to come in and pay over the counter with cash or a check. Or you can even pay with credit card or debit card in the office, the fees still apply. Or you can also pay those from the convenience of your home by using our online payment system.
Good. Well, I want to thank you for coming in. Thank your staff, the young some heroes behind the scenes here. But I appreciate, you gotta do an update coming again sometime later in the year, okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up. Do you have something? You good, Jen? Okay, next up is the Pedco Infra, if I got that right, Pedco Infrastructure. Jeff Shaw will have thirty minute presentation. Is Jeff here? I don't see Jeff here.
The schedule was they were going to.
Oh, we're a little fast, huh?
Six forty. Maybe we could go to the board and commission of the.
Yeah, let's do that. Let's jump to the city council, board and commissions update. Five minute presentations. Okay. Anybody ready? Good? Sarah?
I can kick us off. So I sit on the Latino Chamber Board as the city representative for the Latino Chamber Board. There's a couple of updates. One, the twenty-twenty-five Junior Latino Chamber Program wrapped up last week, which is super exciting. They had thirteen students participate. There was fantastic business plans from students. The students received a paycheck, a stipend anywhere from four hundred and seventy dollars to five hundred and forty dollars. So it's a great investment in our young people, especially when we're talking about skill building. They also hosted an awards luncheon at the conclusion of the program for students and their families. And there were guest presenters, and I think it was a really great way to, to build the skills of our young people. Last Friday, the Latino Chamber hosted their thirty-first annual Richard Reyes Golf Tournament. They had close to a hundred golfers. They had a lot of prizes and giveaways. It was a good fundraising opportunity for them. Right now, the Latino Chamber Board is actually working on a planned gift, giving guide. The guide will be a step-by-step process for donors who are looking to donate after they pass away, or donate through like an active retirement plan to qualify for tax deductions. And they're also working on a long-term investment policy. The Latino Chamber Foundation will be honoring Dr. Henry Roman with the Eighteenth Annual Latino Lifetime Achievement Award. The event will be at CSU Pueblo on Thursday, September twenty-fifth, eleven-thirty to one-thirty. So if you're interested in going to that, the Latino Chamber Foundation should have more information about that. But congratulations to Dr. Henry Roman for being recognized with that great honor.
Councilwoman.
I'm on the Pedco Board, and we're in the process of working with the city and getting the half-cent sales tax ballot issue perfected. So that's one thing that we've been spending a lot of time on. There's also several very active leads that we hope maybe by the end of the year, this year, you know, we could be successful in in introducing them to the citizens. If they make the final decision that locate in Pueblo. I'm also on the Pueblo Urban Renewal Authority Board as a ex-official. And there are some talks, I think, between the city and PURA on how maybe we can expedite the demolition of properties that have been burned. That's, seems to be a priority with urban renewal. On the, the other board that I serve on is the PACOG Board, all of us do. But there was a couple of things that happened in our last board meeting, and one of them was the, the ability, if you go north to the old rest stops, we have two old rest stops. And they can no longer be used, and it all has to do with sanitation. But I had made the suggestion that maybe they could donate all of these covered structures out there. You can see them when you drive north to Pueblo. They're, they've got a metal table with a cover. And there's over twenty out there. And so they are looking into the possibility of donating those to our parks. So I'll keep you all abreast as to whether or not we're successful in, in that. Not much activity on the Front Range Passenger Rail District. There's one success that we've had is that because the partners up north have the resources, there is a chance that we could have a, a partial portion of the rail line between Denver and, and Ford Collins. So that's in the works right now. That's, that's an overall portion of the overall plan of getting rail from Ford Collins all the way to Trinidad. So I'll keep you abreast as, as things move forward on that. And there is a, an election that will take place, not this year, but next year, that the state, the citizens will vote on as to whether or not they're willing to pick up the tab for that front range passenger line. And that's all I have.
Hey, Council Maestri.
Yes, I serve on the Pueblo Regional Building Department Board. And for those who don't know, the county has opted to not renew the IGA and be part of the, in relationship with the city in regards to the Building Department. And so we're just preparing for that transition to take place in January first. And that means, you know, upgrading and improving processes and learning new ways to generate more income from the income loss from the county, and just transition to stand alone with the city. And so that's what we're doing right now. That's about it.
Councilwoman.
For that transition, Council Maestri, can you, like, are, is the county helping at all with that transition? Or like, what's gonna happen with the employees? Like, what, have you heard anything about that?
Right now, we're acting, the, the, it's all up to the building official. He's working, and the board is working with him, developing a new plan, so to try to retain as many employees as possible. And so, you know, that's why we're looking for other avenues of revenue besides just the city permits. So all those things are being researched right now, and then they'll come out with a final plan at some point here in the future.
Okay. And when they were here talking, the county commissioners were here talking, they said they were gonna have kind of a transition plan, not only for the regional building, but also for the county. You know, as I'm ramping up, are you a part of any of those conversations?
No, we're not. That's their, that's their own thing. They're, they're separating and creating their own development. Yeah, their, their own department. And that's their plan and their process and so forth. The city doesn't have any part of that.
Councilwoman.
I, I was gonna suggest that there's a lot of legal aspects to the original agreement, which was a cooperative agreement between the city and the county. And it's possible, okay, that we are going to need to create another entity. Because the first entity was really created with the county being our partner. And since they are not gonna be our partner, I think we need a work session discussing how we're going to cope with the county breaking off, whether or not we need another legal entity, whether we need to be in partnership with, I don't know, another county. It just seems that we need a lot of answers, legal questions really, as to how we're gonna move forward after December thirty-one.
I agree.
Those things right now are being decided to give us the options. Okay, so, but those are all legal. And they're all in executive session. And so right now, they're being discussed, and then they'll be brought to council.
So at the appropriate time.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
That's the plan. That, we're not, we're, as soon as all of that is, we have our plan in place and how we're going, it's gonna be all presented.
That's great. You'll let us know when that, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, President.
So the Harp, the boathouse is doing really well. I was driving over here this, this afternoon. If you look over there, it's, that thing is just, looks huge now. So it's pretty cool how that's happening. I want to remind everybody that on August sixteenth, from two to ten PM, is the the Riverfest down at the Riverwalk. And the great thing about the Riverfest is it's free. You don't have to have a ticket. You could just go down there, and we like free. Some of the things they're doing is the Urban Enduro Competition, Enduro Cross Riders, Freestyle Motocross Exhibition, Freestyle Jet Ski Showcase, Urban Wake Competition, I'll be in that. The Stunt Dudes doing backflips on BMX, I plan on doing that. And the Build Your Own Boat Race, maybe I should stick with that. But anyway, there's gonna be food, retail vendors, live music by Martini Shot. Please go down there to the Riverwalk. It's a Pueblo gem. Fountain Creek Watershed District has, has not had a meeting since the last time we met and gave our updates. But I want to remind everybody that Creek Week is in September. And we need volunteers and crew leaders and volun, more volunteers to help. It's the biggest cleanup of the Fountain Creek every year, and it's a big deal. So if you need any information on that, you can go to the Fountain Creek Watershed District website, or email me, and I'll get you the information. And that's it.
Councilwoman Boston, please.
Thank you, Chair. I'm on a lot of the same boards as a lot of the people, so I won't double down on some of the things. Only thing to add for Harp, I'm on the Harp Foundation Board. It's a little bit different. They're just proud of achieving their fundraising goals for furnishing the boathouse. They're very eager and excited, looking forward to the future of what the boathouse can bring and all the other great options that they'll have once they have the boathouse built. So props to the Foundation Forward and everybody else for helping contribute and seeing the boathouse get done. PACOG, the only things I want to add on that is we have the Youth Ride Free Program going on, that one of our other councilors was working hard on. It beautifies buses, wraps them, and allows children to ride for free. It's a great thing for the community, I think. Also, roundabouts, there's gonna be a lot of new roundabouts coming to the city. So there's been a lot of focus on roundabouts at PACOG, teaching people how to properly use them, how to navigate them, them and things of that such. The other big things that they talk about are the C dot Highway fifty B interchange getting worked on, and the progress updates going on on that. You can basically see more progress happening every week, as well as the passing lanes. I think they're trying to get twelve passing lanes put in from here to Kansas. So that's another big thing they're focusing on. Planning and zoning is another board I sit on. The biggest things that have happened there, of course, there's been some simple rezonings, some signage plans, things like that. But the biggest thing was that the Dillon Renewal District has passed that. So it'll be coming to us soon for, for their talks. And as Councilman Flores said, Pedco is just talking about the half-cent sales tax mostly. And Pura is looking at some interesting things going into the future, so stay tuned for that. That's all I have.
Counselor Latino.
Thank you. I'm on the airport board. And doing a lot of things there, we have new leadership and Chairman Jim Spitzer. Who's got a great background. In that area, having served. As a pilot in the metropolitan area of Denver. For a private firm. And and has had experience and in in that area all over the country. So we have him and his leadership and. So be working between with Greg and Jamie and and the board and. We've got a few pilots on the board now that have moved back to Pueblo that are retired. And we've got them on the board and hopefully get the restaurant open out there soon. Get the runways fixed and we start bringing in. Some private jets with the new. Steel mill. Ownership who've come into the airport already and. So that's gonna be a big asset to us. Pretty much it.
Okay, just real quick, if anybody has a contact to C A E, DOS, you Brett or Dennis, I thought you had some interest in flying. They're willing to take you up, you only go up about ten thousand square feet, we're good. But if you want to give them a call, it's gonna be Yak that's gonna answer the phone, so if you need that. Any other questions? We're good. Let's move on to Mr. Jeff Shaw. From Pedco, he's the president and CEO. And it's gonna be in reference to instruct infrastructure, excuse me, discussions. Thank you. And who's who's with you as well? Make sure we can.
Mike Cuddy, I always figure Mike doesn't need an introduction because he's known by everybody in the development world, but Mike Cuddy, who's a board member officer. Oh, sorry, so with me, I'll let him introduce himself, go ahead, Mike.
Michael Cuddy, owner of North Star Engineering Surveying, but I also sit on the Pedco Board, so I hear the. Talk more technical side of it.
Okay. There's certain things I can speak about when we get sent it sometimes the technical and land development stuff, we always defer to our experts, it's nice to have somebody like. Mike Cuddy on our board, who's a go to when it comes to land development, so. We have a presentation and probably to follow along the the easiest way, certainly you can go through the presentation, but. I'm gonna ask if just to pull up the map, because as I go through the presentation, it'll probably be a good idea. To have the map up first, which will be the second to last page, the first. Do I control that or you guys? Or maybe not. Now, let's see. I don't have the map up, do you get the attachments? Let's see, the other, the next one, the one before that. So what we're talking about today is the St. Charles Industrial Park. And. Essentially, the short of it is gonna be infrastructure related to St. Charles Industrial Park, but also how it benefits the southern part of the city. We thought it was important to give a background on that park and just because we don't have a, you know, a full. An out, a farther out view of it, St. Charles Industrial Park is essentially where C S Wind is, was Vestas, now it's C S Wind. St. Charles Industrial Park makes up not only the land that C S Wind sits on, on the east side of the railroad tracks you have. Where it says Rail Park is where the city has. Acreage that has currently served by rail and then the other part of the park is the portion. That's in the red, kind of the slashed line, which is about four hundred acres that is owned by the Pueblo Development Foundation. So a little bit of background on the park, I think is important. The park was really created for Vestas in two thousand eight is the reason we started that park. And those that have that have been around and remember the the story of Estes and what happened, Vestas was originally looking at the at the Airport Industrial Park and we were looking at the Boeing Building. After Boeing had moved the the rocket manufacturing in Decatur, Alabama. And for a lot of reasons, we tried to navigate and fit Vestas into that facility. But because of what they needed for train and really large unit trains and how they move these tower sections, it just didn't make sense to bring it across. United and so we pivoted and we said, okay, there's a lot of land south of Pueblo. Scannell Family, who owns most of that land south of Pueblo and, you know, as far as the eye can see south of land. We decided to create that park and brought the infrastructure down Green Horn all the way down to the park and so. A little bit of a backwards development to some degree, you know, sometimes in developments, you're gonna start closer to the city and develop. Away from it, this is a little bit different because we brought Vestas so far down. All the, a lot of the infrastructure was in place for Vestas, so we brought down water, brought down water and sewer and gas. And that was in two thousand eight. The next project that was placed on the St. Charles Industrial Park was on the east side of the park. Which is where the rail park is and you can see kind of the the three lines on the map. Which was related to Rock Rockla Concrete Ty and Basla. That was in two thousand twelve, two thousand seventeen, C R Minerals came into the park, they're directly south of Rockla and Basla. Also rail related, they work with moving, Rockla helps them move some of their trains for their product. Was a Petco City project to start with. And then the complication factor of that site to some degree, really on that rail serve site. By Baya background and not to go into the deep weeds, but essentially that park way back from the seventies. There was an agreement between. C M. C W. No, C N W Rail, the short line that operates out of Steel Mill. And then the Atchison Topeka Railroad, which turns into B N S F on Howard Dell when they were building Comanche Power Plant on the coal. And so there was a deal in place that. Then or now B N S F had the right to serve that coal facility, C N W Rail had the rail park, but it turned into a logistical nightmare. And so in two thousand nineteen, we worked the city, we worked with the city and C W Rail, B N S F and U P. For C W Rail to relinquish its switching rights down there, so that opened up the park as a dual serve site and so. In economic development world, certainly rail world, it's. It's a luxury and it's certainly an advantage for a community to have a rail serve site, but if you can have a dual serve site. It means you can have it served by both, at least in our in our area in Colorado, it can be served by both U P and B N S F. Which means it gives a competitive advantage on pricing and how you can bring product into the site and leave the product and so. Right now, the site is dual serve. And then around that time, right after that time, we helped negotiate and the city purchased. The remaining rail park land, four hundred and fifty acres. To develop and essentially all of our rail clusters and other clusters that related to rail. And so the city owns that yellow portion that says Rail Park. And then around, then two thousand twenty, at the time that they purchased it. You'll see how it kind of die, that it kind of dives into that, you'll see the solar site directly to the north of the rail park. The property boundary is actually north of the. Where the solar is on it, but that's part of the Everest Project. And when Everest was looking at their expansion and how they did it with solar. They, the city then leased a portion of that ground to Light Source B P for that Everest Project. Which left the remaining acreage available for large projects, especially, we've tried to master plan and looked at it for different. Configurations, worked with B N S F, worked with U P. To try to get an understanding of what it should look like, the conclusion we've always come to is we need to, you know, kind of wait for the the end user to define what the rail site would look like. And then most recently in two thousand twenty four, Pueblo Development Foundation purchased the northern four hundred acres north of C S Wind from an old greenhouse project. And so for the most part, all the land is controlled and I say. Either by P D F. C S Wind or the city. The issue that we're, we've been running into and will continue to run into and. I talked about it in previous presentations to some degree and we talk about what site selectors and trends in site selection and it's all about. You know, workforce availability, but also utilities and infrastructure and having a site ready, a site needs to be ready to go. Not necessarily all the entitlements in place, but it needs to have utilities available. It needs to be for the most part, you know, it could be a green field, but you need to have the geotech for the most part and the wetland studies. And so it's ready to go, the limitation that we have on that site and we've been talking about it since roughly about two thousand twenty two. Has to do with wastewater. The site currently on the rail park is not served by a wastewater. The mainly because. The geography of the land would require a lift station to tie into the. The line that's coming down Green Horn, Green Horn, just so you know, is the blue line to directly to the. Would be the the west or the left of the the horizontal red lines, so the Green Horn. Wastewater system collects from Vestas and then goes up up into the southern part of the city and eventually ties into the treatment facility. In order to have the site ready, it's gonna require a lift station, wastewater lift station. Part of the concerns with lift stations is the timing to have them in place. You certainly got to be permitted and go through C D P H E. Any given time, it's estimated, I think the time's actually a little bit easier right now, but we've been quoted anything from a year to a year and a half. And the short side is potentially nine months. Typically, those are deal killers for large prospects, they need to have the site ready to go. So we've worked with a number of large projects on that site. Continuing to work with large projects on that site to get a feel for what the needs would look like and how big of a lift station we'd need to put in play. And the idea behind it is really to. Put in a lift station on the rail park, we'd go underneath the B N S F U P, there's two parallel lines. That but. Now C S Wind, it would go across the southern portion of the land that's owned by P D F. That easement's been already been negotiated and then it would tie into the wastewater system on Green Horn. So that solves part of the problem, part of the problem is the lift station is not in place, so it needs to be in place. The next issue we run into is, which may not come as a surprise to some degree, because I think the community's been talking about it for some time. When you bring in large users, industrial users. Is that there's a capacity issue all the way up in the wastewater system, all the way up to roughly Mesa. The and the benefit of this type of project and so we've worked with. Through the years, we've worked with city planning, public works, public wastewater. City administration to talk about what this could look like and the needs of it and how this benefits not only industrial park, but it also would benefit. Those developments in the southern part of the city because those those land development sites. And Mike can talk a little bit more specifically on what sites that actually would benefit. We'd have to upside that system all the way up Green Horn, essentially up and if you can go to the next map. And it's 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 difficult because it's a large map, but it's. Shrunk and in size. Will give you an idea how far that. Upscaling has to happen, so essentially the yellow box at the far right bottom of the corner is the rail park that we're talking about. And then it would tie into the current system, which is kind of those pink lines and you can follow it as it jogs all the way up into the city, all the way to Mesa Avenue. Like I mentioned, this would benefit obviously the St. Charles and Duster Park, be able to move projects into it, but there's also a lot of. I guess I'd say residential opportunities that are choked by part of the same issue and I think Mike can speak a little bit in more detail about those developments.
Yeah, so like Jeff explained. It does serve the existing three hundred acres the city owns on that on the east side of the rail park. And then the additional four hundred acres by P D F is currently owning. There's an additional two hundred acres north of the P D F site that's privately owned, that could be served by some of the upsides also. Additionally, with this extension and lift station. In that corner, it would then bring in to Rockla and C R Minerals, who are currently on a septic system. And tie them into the city wastewater system. Beyond that, south of Lime Road could have an opportunity to drain into the city system also, so that could add in some additional land area. South of Lime Road that's immediately adjacent to, you know, Vestas and Sierra Minerals in this, the Yellow Rail Park area. For additional industrial park if ever needed in the future. You know, this, the main project serves industrial users in the industrial park, so I mean, it's primarily economic development driven. However, because of the long stretch of upsizing of existing lines and you can see the various sizes. But it's, you know, upsizing, you know, ten, twelve and fifteen inch existing lines to twenty one and twenty seven inch lines for the added volume. That corridor, if you, you know. Kind of picture the city wastewater system like a tree and that's kind of a trunk of a tree and then you have multiple branches off of that. Some of the area that would drain into that upsized line include all the developments south of Lake Minnaqua. Along the Boulevard, which we're starting to see a lot more development down there and redevelopment. That line serves that area, so if we had a very big user coming in on Pueblo Boulevard, you know, east of I twenty, I'm sorry, west of I twenty five. This would benefit that user also additionally. I'm not sure if anybody's familiar with it, but there's a outfall called the Nolan Trace Outfall that goes through South Point. That is basically the south side of the Settlers Village Development. That line serves majority of the South Point Master Plan because the existing system that is north of the existing master plan isn't big enough. So that's a basically a cutoff outfall that drains the water to the east and into this system. That line would then serve a future development in South Point. Additionally, that line gets extended further west into the Pastora Ranch Master Plan, which is south of El Camino. Because Pastora Ranch cannot drain into El Camino because those lines are not big enough. So this is a major outfall for that development additionally, so it not only opens up this rail park. It's got added benefits because it serves that whole south side of Pueblo. And opens up residential development, commercial development and other. Additionally, on the very west end past Pastora, there is a portion of the Jackson Ranch property that could drain into this also. So it could open up a piece of that, piece of property that far west. And all that would drain down into one of the branches and get into this trunk line. So this is a bottleneck that's been known for years. Until we get a major user, there was no one that had the funds to do so. But if we can capitalize it on as an economic development funds and utilize this as that project to get the rail park ready. Because you saw on the list that the number one priority for site selectors is site ready. So if we can get these sites ready, then that gives us an opportunity to chase down. Those employers and whatever they might be. That we won't have to say, yeah, we're kind of ready, but we got a year and a half before we can get the septic system in and or the sewer lift station in and the upgrades, so. Then we're not site ready, so it's city owned property and if we can make it as ready as possible, then it makes it marketable for you guys as much as possible.
So with that, I'll open up the questions and so obviously the ask and what we're asking for and what we're proposing is. Using half cent sales tax funds to do this, the half cent sales tax fund obviously allows for this, allows for infrastructure work, allows for capital. Projects, but to at least in, I guess in my opinion, I think for the boards, this is this is a perfect project that needs to be moved forward because it's gonna help and open up the industrial park and help with the capacity. But it's gonna benefit the city of Pueblo and the south city of Pueblo and the current ordinances that is would allow for it, so. With that, I ask any questions, oh, I did have a cost, so the question's cost, probably somebody may ask the cost question.
Okay, we had a lot of question, President goes, I mean, the guy goes to the President, go ahead.
Thank you. So my question is this, if you. I get what you're saying on the benefits and and how it opens everything else else up. But if you have an industrial user that goes in there and you tie in all these other things to it. I guess my question would be to the city is. Can our wastewater plant handle that?
So.
She's here? So it's not just, I guess in my opinion, it's not just a a. Infrastructure deal to open up that piece of property, but I think that somehow wastewater has to be tied into it.
No, I agree with that and so the big projects.
We use half cent sales tax money to do it all.
Well, so that and I don't want to answer this, obviously.
Can we rephrase the question for Carla, she just got back into the room, I'm not sure if she heard the question, did you hear the question, Carla?
When they say we that we okay the infrastructure out at this industrial site. Somebody comes in, a big industrial user, we're tying in all of these other entities. My big question was is is can we handle it?
So right now, the capacity of the plant is about approximately sixty percent, it goes up and down off of that, but sixty percent is the average. So the numbers I were given for the area in yellow is about. And what we're talking about is about two million gallons that build out. So before we have to do anything for the permit requirements, we have about four million gallons to play with before we're at eighty percent. So they would take approximately half of our buffer. And then we'd have another two billion gallons now. The other. Development he was talking about is South Point. South Point right now is in negotiations for putting in some solar fields, which will cut down the capacity that they need. As well, and I'm sorry, I don't have the numbers of what that's be at build out. Plus, there's another line that was put in for them specifically and it's about a twenty four inch line. So there are. And that line was specific to them, so when we talked about this and sorry, the map's on it. So when we talked about this and sorry, the map's on its side. So when you go north is everything downstream does need to be upsized to 27 inches. When they did the master plan in 2009, they actually thought the build out of this area would be around 5 million gallons with a lift station at 4 million or publicly owned. That has been reduced because most of the property on the bottom is now solar fields. So that wasn't going, that's not going to happen. And so technically, we do have the capacity. It'll just take the 2 million. And then we designed this so that it would flow and that we wouldn't have to do more of the backbone. But definitely there are bottlenecks along that system.
So my, I guess, let me put it a different way. If everything happened the way that it's it's hoping to happen out there in this industrial park and you take, you add the $2 million, $2 million, the 2 million gallons, which takes you to capacity. So that nixes all further development.
It wouldn't necessarily nix development. What it would happen is once we get another 2 million gallons, we'd be at 80%. And according to our discharge permit, at 80%, we have to be in some type of design to expand our capacity at the plant. We don't have to be in construction, but we do have to be in design. And once we get above that between 80% and 95%, we're going to have to expand the plant. When we have to expand the plant, we're not talking small numbers. Right now, looking at the master plan, we'd have to install redundant systems on our clarifiers, which right now are about 10 million apiece. So we'd need that. And then we'd also need to make sure that our organic capacity is able to keep up as well. So that would be, we could do a $20 million project at the plant as well. Depending on what types of businesses go in as well. Because what we're not talking about is the organic capacity of this is also, they've also discussed with us. And they would also take us up to 70% of our organic capacity, which is BOD.
So wouldn't it be prudent to do them both at the same time?
We would have to do both at the same time.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Mastry and then Counselor Flores.
How much, you didn't say how much it was.
So we've taken an estimate and I I I'm really careful to defer to wastewater. The initial estimate, my understanding that that this was six months or so ago, at least, I think, was with the lift station and the upsizing was somewhere around a 15 to 16 million dollar number. We've talked to Andrew Hayes as well to get it to work with Andrew to get and wastewater to get it more up to date. Kind of what a number would look like. Part of that was how much the asphalt and the asphalt replacement. But we've estimated between 16 and 17 million for the lift station and for the upsizing. And I would defer to wastewater.
Okay. When we talk about the lift station, are you talking about a public lift station? And then what flow are you talking about for that lift station? Because the way this was working was that the businesses would each have their own private lift station to get to the gravity flow. So are you talking a lift station at where it was planned in the master plan? Or what capacity of the lift station? And then also, what are you thinking for the rest of that?
So it'd be a public lift station that would serve that whole east side.
Okay.
The capacity, the total capacity, I mean, right now, there's only two small users over there. So right now, it's very low. The additional, whoever goes on the 300 acres that's left is hard to say, depends on the nature of the user. So, you know, right now, we just defer back to the MASH plan based on the amount of area that's left over compared to what was in 2009 when that was all open. So just reduce it by that percentage would be our estimate at this point is our best guess based on what we know.
Yeah, because the master plan had the lift station at 4 million gallons capacity, which of course is reduced now. And then also had the upsizing to a 30 inch line after the 15.
But we've used up over half that area in solar panels. So that's obviously, I mean, just rough numbers, you're probably less than 2 million right now.
Yeah. And then the time period also depends on what the state of Colorado does.
Exactly. So it'd be a public lift station and serve multiple properties, not just the one's property. And then it's sort of everything that would be downstream of the Green Horn elevation.
Okay.
So when we upgrade this line, I guess the best, I'm the way I'm thinking of it just logically is we upgrade the line, which allows for how many possible connections? Because that's where we make our money back. And additional revenue for the wastewater plant is on the connection fees. So what would be a way to look at the benefit of this would be how many possible connections are we going to get out of upgrading that line? Because if you're feeding residential, that's every home has a connection fee. Every commercial lot will have a connection fee. And so if you could somehow calculate how many connection fees are going to be able to tie to that line, then would we be getting our money back? Would there be money off of that? In addition to like, because really, you know, we would hope that developers would upgrade the infrastructure. I mean, that's what I've in in the business, that's what I've grown to know. Developers bring in their, pay for their own infrastructure. Right now, you're asking us to front load infrastructure for a possibility, but still that's going to have to be paid for. But if it's going to serve subdivisions and other commercial properties, it would be nice to know if upgrading that grows that the volume of in the connection fees to not only pay for itself, but to also generate enough revenue to also upgrade what needs to be done at the plant. I don't know. I I think that's kind of simple math, a simple math of it all, but is it not that simple?
It is. I mean, from a residential standpoint, we can make an estimate of how many residential units it would cover. Commercial is a little different because it's based on water usage. Fees are based on your meter size and how much water you use. So at this point, it's difficult to say because it's time we don't know those users. Because they're going to be the biggest user is the commercial and industrial stuff. But I mean, we can estimate based on a 2 million gallon usage, what the sewer fees would be for something of that magnitude. And you know, it's not a single user, but it's basically spread out over a large area. So we could look at that. But I mean, it's a hefty investment when you're talking about 2 million gallons because of the size of the plant we're talking about. I mean, that there's, we're at 60% with a roughly full million dollar or full million gallon capacity left over. And if we're talking a 2 million gallon piece of it, that's a large percentage of the total users are in Pueblo. So I mean, it's a substantial dollar amount. We can absolutely look at that and figure out what that ballpark is based on some of those numbers we can estimate. But, you know, in the end, it's probably, it is my gut feeling, like I said, just doing this a long time, that those fees are going to outweigh the cost of installing this now. You'll get your money back, especially if we can get users in those in that in that area. Not just from the cost of the wastewater fees, but also what it brings to me and all these other benefits.
Yeah, and for a guy who does it every day, but we're trying to sell it to the public.
Understand.
So I understand that, you know, you know that, but it would be like it's going to outweigh the benefit. And and sometimes that example, when we're selling it to the public is is that's how people calculate things. Rather than why are we front loading infrastructure for what, you know, in case somebody comes to town? And we're right now, you're looking, I mean, let's get, we're looking at that one large parcel and a potential a potential business coming to town. But how does it benefit the rest of the community? Because we all, everybody has to pay, you know, we might provide it, but everybody has to pay to tie into it, all the developers. And so with that comes the connection fees and kind of reimburses back that. And I think that's the most simplified way for the public to understand it. Because the public has the right to understand these things. It's their money. And one thing I learned in some of my conversations with the Public Utility Commission is that they don't allow for front loading infrastructure because who pays for it? The rate payer in case somebody comes to town. And so you know, just a couple of those little fundamentals that I've learned that affect not anyone, but the taxpayer or the rate payer or everybody else, but the multimillion billion dollar business that comes here and gets an incentive.
Understood. And no real argument against any of that.
No, no, but I'm not, and I'm not arguing with you. I'm just trying to say for the the everybody in this community who puts into this community, invests their dollars into this community, should have the right to know the simplified answer to all of it. And so that's just, that's 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 just my input as far as selling it. I, you know, I come from a time when developers had to pay for everything. So I'm not real, you know, I'm not real big on on, you know, providing that, but we'll see. I guess really too, what I would like to see is and learn more about, maybe I should just spend some time with PEDCO on how the incentives have changed from the beginning until now. Because it seems like in the beginning, there were a lot more tax breaks and less of the types of, you know, to for Ed's incentives and less of the things that we offer now upfront. Have we had anybody turn a deal down because of that property and the way it exists now? I mean, have you had previous potentials for that particular lot? And they've said, oh, no, because it needs a lift station. And it's like you're telling us all these things that make it not basically sellable in this instance. Have you had anybody actually turn it down because it doesn't have the lift station in place already?
Not, no, I mean, not specifically because of the list station, certainly as part of the considerations. And so, you know, companies are going to look for prospects or site selectors or whoever's going to look at it for a lot of different characteristics. I'm not going to misrepresent and say, you know, Acme Manufacturing said, if you had a lift station in place, we'd come here. No, that's not the way it's going to work necessarily. But what 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 does happen as we market the property? And that's not to say we don't have prospects looking at it right now because we do. The conversation on the lift station and the upsizing and a timing standpoint on how long it's going to take to do permitting, construction, get it going, ties into when when a building would, when a prospect would want a building ready to go. So it's part of the considerations as well as the cost consideration. So it's not the sole reason, no, it's one of them without a doubt. But when companies are looking for site ready sites, that's certainly going to be one of them. And if you can't represent that you have a site ready site, then they're going to pivot and look somewhere else. But it's not the only reason.
Okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, before we go a little further, could you just define for the audience as well, some of us that are in the dark up here and reference the definition on your lifts, the lift stations you keep on talking about? Because I'm not as clear as I should be on it, but I'd like to know.
Can I?
Please.
So the topography in this particular area is very challenging. So it doesn't just flow down to the 15 inch line, it goes up. So you have to lift it over the mountain to get it to the gravity to flow. So that's what lift stations are. They just lift the water, pump it up and move it to the gravity system and then go on.
Great, even I can digest that. Counselor Flores, please.
And I do want to, and just because we've been working with wastewater for years on this kind of a concept. And I I got to give a credit to the staff on it because we've looked at a lot of different creative opportunities on how you're actually going to move this stuff, either to a lift station or taking it up Lime Road and backing it up. They've spent a tremendous amount of man hours and time kind of working on concepts. And I think it's just important to recognize them for the work that they've done.
Thank you for that. Counselor Flores, please.
Thank you. I I think our citizens expect the one thing from PEDCO and that's the creation of jobs. And I think they voted, that's what they've been voting for for the last 40 years, is the creation of jobs. And here we have a situation where we also have, if if this was in a vacuum and we did not have the Habsin sales tax that the citizens have given us, we would not have the money in the city right now to even do that. So in order to maximize on what we've promised the citizens in Pueblo and the creation of jobs, this particular lift station with the other benefits that are going to come with it, I think we 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 need to move forward on it, in my opinion. So what I'm going to ask you is, what is the, if we were to begin the process today, how long is this going to take? I know there's there's going to be a planning phase, there's got to be a, I don't know, subdivision phase, I guess, as to where it's going to go through all of that. Could you walk us through all the little pieces and also estimate about how long this is going to take?
I'm going to defer to wastewater. I don't want to put them on the spot necessarily on a timing. We believe somewhere between a year, year and a half for the design phase to do the application. Part of this is also because of the, I don't want to say complication, because we're having to deal with the railroads in UP and BNSF. We got to get the design work before we make application to go underneath the railroads, to get the permit, to go underneath the railroads with that shared utility quarter. So we've estimated around a year, year and a half, worst case scenario timeframe. And I'll defer to wastewater if they think I'm incorrect on that timeframe.
You're generous. I would say about a year or two years to get that fully designed. And then not only that, but you're going to have to put together for a lift station and engineering report. That's going to have to not only engineer the lift station, but you're going to have to get all the financials from the wastewater department, which we put together for other people. And also they, the state will require different emergency plans. Also, they will require us to submit documents saying for the next 20 years, we'll maintain it. We have the funds to maintain it and will not cause problems to the backbone of our system. They will also require a permit for anything above 24 inches. And each one of those, they do not make guarantees. They will look at them and then if there's any problems, then you have to resubmit and start over. And each time you do that, it's about 60 to 90 days.
So a long time.
However, seems to me that if you get, if if you get a lead and a company that wants to come in here that needs what, you know, needs this, that we could be working in concert with them, meeting their deadline. You would imagine that it would take a company, a large company from a year and a half to two to be able to get set up to start the whole project.
Yeah, and it's it kind of a delicate balance too right now because we're not working in this, it's just kind of in a vacuum and we see some dirt ground out there that we got to develop. Obviously, there's been prospects previously on that site. There's current prospects on it. So as we look at what's kind of necessary and the requirements, the timeframe and the building, they're certainly in mind with, you know, previous prospects as well as current ones looking at it right now. So we're listening to them and understanding what the needs are. And and that kind of leads into the conversation, obviously, about, you know, if it's a year to two years, that's the, that's that, that's the problem. That's the issue that we're running into on a timing standpoint.
Right. Wanted to ask you, is is the, what would be the next step in order to begin this process, I guess? What do you need from city council or the mayor or?
PEDCO would be the lead on it. And it would just, we've offered up our engineer of record for them to use to make sure that they have a an engineer that's familiar with our system. So our engineer of record has done a collection system master plan. So they're aware of the system and the different bottlenecks and they would be able to get the design started. They they're the ones who also did like the north side extension, the west side upsizing, and also the Southern Colorado clinic as well. So they would be very familiar with the system so they could go. They're under our umbrella, PEDCO, we've talked to them, they are able to hire them without delay. And then we would just work with them.
To our legal counsel, is this something that maybe I should be asking our city attorney? What would be the next step for us to give PEDCO the green light to move on this?
So city council would have to approve the use of funds from the Habsin sales tax to go to this project. So we would have to create a project budget and appropriate funds. My understanding in order to do that, they have to have a design so we kind of know how much we're talking about. So I don't know how much the design would cost to begin with. You could certainly start from there, but it would have to be something from council to budget and appropriate the funds from the Habsin sales tax.
Would the design people give us an engineer, an engineering estimate as to the cost?
Yes. They usually get, so as they get closer to 100% design, they'll usually give you, right now, it's like plus or minus 30%. And then they'll figure out from there.
And then they'll figure out from there. Um, the design cost is usually about ten percent of the project as a whole. So.
So we should be, we should be asking for uh, an RFP from this design um, engineering firm. And you're saying that Pedco should be asking them to give us a, a cost figure, then, then we can uh, that, then, then that would be a resolution that would come to us and we would approve just that piece of it.
You, you could certainly do that. And I'm not sure on the, the construction side of this. And has Ped, Pedco done the actual construction in the entire project or does the project's done through the city?
The project would be done through Pedco, because they're the ones who have the funds, because we're not, um, the half cent sales tax, I'm sorry. It's just not coming from the enterprise, so we wouldn't be funding this.
Still. You wouldn't be funding it, but who would be in charge of the project? Would it be a city project or would it be a Pedco project? Cause I don't know that Pedco would actually run the project.
Well, our preference would obviously be, be a city project, uh, since it's city dollars rather than transfer, the city would be able to.
Yeah. I just don't know about how it would work with um, city dollars into the enterprise, how that would work, but we can sure.
So we'd have to figure, we'd have to figure that part of it out, but uh, the, the half cent sales tag of city dollars, so they would be appropriated. I think we'd have to go through the RFP process. So we'd probably have to develop um, an RFP and send it out for the engineering. And um, that would have to go out to bid and then the engineer would bid and then they would develop the plan. And then based upon the plan, um, we would then look at an overall um, budget for the project.
So it's possible we couldn't use the, the engineering firm that you're so familiar.
Talk to Pedco about that and they can pick whichever engineer they want for their project. Is that correct?
If, yeah, on our side, yes.
It makes sense to use your on-call engineer because they're so familiar with their system, it makes more sense.
Yeah, and then if it's under us or the enterprise, they would be our engineer of record. So I'm not sure how that would all work.
So obviously we haven't gotten down into the nitty gritty of this. So I guess what we would need from uh, council tonight would be some direction as to whether or not to go forward. And then staff would have to figure out where we are in the process, what the steps are, and then we'd have to bring that back to council um, or a formal approval, if that's the direction council wants us to go forward. Um, but I think there's a lot of details um, after, if council wants us to go forward, there's a lot of details that we need to work out between enterprise and city and Pedco.
Counsel My Street and Counsel Boston and Counsel Martinez, so we don't get too far in the weeds, let's think to clean it up in the next three speakers if we can. Counsel My Street.
So obviously we have businesses out there already and everything's rolling. Are we, are you coming to us because you have a particular prospect that their outlet is going to be bigger than normal? With the two, is it two million gallons? Is that a day or is that one in and one out? Is that in a, a day?
So typically, um, so yes, some of our prospects in mind and we look at kind of previous ones, work ones as well as current ones. And that'll give us an idea of kind of that high end and kind of a middle and lower end. We obviously judge um, some of what we do, um, when we're looking at projects both on wastewater capacity, um, but also water capacity as a whole. And so working with public water, we kind of know the parameters, what we have to deal with. Um, I can't imagine a project at least certainly on a first phase, that would be greater than two million gallons a day. I think current ones that we're working with, um, they are large water users, um, but they're certainly not over two million gallons a day on a first phase type opportunity.
So you're looking at collectively out there with all of those lots? Or you're looking at this one four hundred and eighteen acres? Because yeah, it's going to affect who's out there now, if it's a, if it's a large flow.
Collectively. Collectively, because you know, a large user such as, you know, to that kind of a size on the rail park type site, um, that's going to take the whole site, to be honest with you. Um, the, the other acreage um, are really kind of being designed and prospects related for kind of a less water intensive necessarily. So um, certainly on the rail park, which had the lift station requirement attached to it, um, and the capacity, I can't imagine it being over two million gallons a day collectively.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Boston?
Hey, um, so this all sounds great on paper and I, you know, it would be great um, if this specific prospect were to come through. Um, is all this going to be mostly for that one specific prospect? Or would this kind of be for more options? Like, do we have a master plan designed for the whole area of what we're going to be potentially using this for if this idea were to fall through?
So for the St. Charles Industrial Park, great question. So for the three hundred and fifty acres, the rail park, um, which is of the available square footage in the St. Charles Industrial Park is actually the smaller of the parcels. Um, the larger parcel is north of CS Wind, that's a four hundred acre parcel. Um, and whether or not, you know, one project takes three hundred and fifteen acres or somebody else takes a four, and that's a, that's a pretty large project. Um, so it's certainly going to benefit the industrial park as a whole. So certainly the four hundred acres. Um, and certainly to, you know, to the councilwoman's question, as, as users come in, they obviously have to tie into it, they've got to pay it, comes with a reimbursement um, requirement attached to it. Um, but it could be depending on um, what kind of industries move forward. Um, it could be two users occupying one on three hundred and fifteen acres, another four hundred acres. Or it could be on four hundred acres, it could be four users at a hundred acres. It just depends on how it divides out. But no, it's definitely for more than just that one site.
Okay, and so this is still a potential opportunity. Um, so if we were to allocate all these funds and this were to fall through, what we're, where would that leave us?
So the site would be ready, at least as far as a wastewater perspective. Um, if, you know, if one prospect falls through, it's certainly marketable sites without a doubt. There's a couple of things that does make this, that site very valuable, as well as the site north of CS Wind. Obviously, um, in today's world, um, rail and availability of rail for raw material and distribution is important. Um, you have a lot of communities trying to stand up heavy rail to move product. Carl Springs is trying to do a large acreage parcel up in Carl Springs to move rail. Um, this site already has rail served into it, so it's a pretty active site. Um, as far as prospects, they're usually large in scale. Um, and as far as, um, there's another thing on the, one of the other aspects of the um, St. Charles Industrial Park, as far as the four hundred acres that this would, that this would benefit uh, to some degree if prospects come into it, um, is, you know, kind of the other amenities are attached to that. Obviously, the other city infrastructure that's already there, water's already coming down there. Um, it parallels two long haul fiber lines. Um, it also has um, the Greenhorn substation from, um, with it that has um, significant capacity still attached to it. And so today's world with electric, um, a lot of projects are tasting, chasing availability of load, availability of electricity. And so that substation has availability into it, so it's going to be very high. If our prospect, one of the two that we're working with right now falls through on that site and the rail park, there's others ones behind it. It's, and the four hundred acres is the most, is, is the most active site there is and at least in our network of, in the community for sites. So there'll be projects attached to it.
Okay, um, you know, I really do like the sound of it, you know, I, I do think all this infrastructure and uh, upgrades and things down there would really be a benefit, like you said, to that whole industrial park getting developed, as well as parts of the south side, Jackson Ranch, Jellystone, things like that. Um, you know, finishing Lake Avenue, all that. Um, but it kind of just seems a little contradictory that we're going to be putting all kinds of money in for infrastructure for future development when we didn't want to do infrastructure modifications to the ordinance when we could have gotten the Boulevard helped to get ten businesses put in there. So I, I mean, I think this would be good, as I thought that would have been good. I just think it's a little interesting. It kind of seems very similar.
Okay, Counselor Martinez?
Um, so it sounds like we're almost paying for three things, right, Jeff? So the lift station, the pi- the piping upgrades, and then the wastewater treatment plant up, or s- no.
The wastewater treatment plant, any upgrades would not be part of this money that they're talking about. It would be completely.
After we hit the eighty percent threshold, that's when we need the, okay. And for that, for those upgrades, upgrades, my fear is that um, we're going to need them sooner than later. Uh, but then we're not going to have any money for it. It, could that be out of the half cent sales tax funds, that upgrade?
So it depends, is, is the answer. So for the, the lift station, the lift station is directly going to service the industrial park. So under the criteria ordinance, um, it is allowed to create and develop industrial parks. You can get it's under the special categories. Um, so the lift station would fit, I believe, to the extent that they need pipe to get whatever they're lifting from that area to our wastewater treatment plant. Um, that pipe uh, would be included in that. Now, we wouldn't be able to take lines off of that necessarily to service any of the other areas, like the commercial or residential areas would not be something that would fall under half cent uh, criteria. But the pipe to get from the lift station, from the industrial park to the wastewater treatment plant. If the, the wastewater treatment plant generally just needs to be upgraded, um, it would have to depend on the circumstances as to why it needed to be upgraded. Let's say they got somebody at the industrial park that was going to increase it, that one project was going to increase it to over the eighty percent. Potentially, we could use the half cent sales tax for that, because it would be tied to a specific project. Um, if it was just generally because that brought it up a little bit and then with the additional developments like Jellystone or some other residential developments, that the entire system had brought it up to eighty percent, we had to increase it for that. I would say no half cent sales tax money would not be able to be used for that. So it would depend on the timing of that and what was the um, catalyst for having to do those changes.
Okay.
I guess this might answer now without knowing more.
And then, Andrew, when you said eighty to ninety-five percent needs uh, per the permit, you would have to be in the design phase?
At eighty percent, yes.
At eighty percent, what's the cost of the design?
Once again, it depends on what we're going to do to what the increases that is needed. So if we're seeing that our flows are increasing fast, we usually, what the design would be is for twenty years in the future. So there'd be a study to figure out exactly what we're increasing to and then design to it. The last time they did um, was in the eighties and they designed to nineteen million gallons. So we haven't reached that threshold, but we always are watching our flows to make sure the state requires us to as well. And then as we get closer to it, we definitely start to engage with our engineer of record at that time, figure out what upgrades are needed and what the costs are. Um, to Regina's point, um, right now, uh, the plant investment fee would, part of that could be used. It would probably not cover what would be needed. It's just outpacing it.
Okay.
So that would be um, borne by the ratepayers at that time and we'd have to plan for it. That's why there's eighty to ninety-five, you have that threshold, so you can start saving money and also get the design under.
And then, so should this be approved and we're um, increasing the capacity uh, for the wastewater pipes? Last week or a couple of weeks ago, um, we heard from stormwater staff about increasing the capacity of the stormwater pipes and around, you know, that Mesa Avenue area. What a- a- are there any interactions between these two plans?
No. So stormwater has outfalls into the nearest waterway, whereas in there an open system. So they collect rainwater and um, their capacity is based on year floods, like hundred, year or two hundred, anyway. Um, whereas ours is based on residential units of water that people are using. So the two systems are completely separate. We have, we don't have a combined system here. So wastewater flows one way, we flow the other.
Okay.
So stormwater and this, this site would flow is generally north and northeast toward the St. Charles uh, Creek, uh, St. Charles River. So that's kind of the fall of topography. So any new user over there would have to then detain their stormwater and discharge it along historic rates. It doesn't go down, it would never make it to the Mesa area from a stormwater standpoint, because it's going to be intercepted by an open creek at some point between here and there. So, but it's going to reduce it back down to historic rates, there's no real increase to that section. Those issues that stormwater's facing are existing infrastructure, existing development, that were never sized large enough to handle the rainwater in that area.
Right.
Which is just historically an old part of town and we receive that in all historic part neighborhoods. So stormwater in this area does not make it to that junction, this completely separate situation.
Um, and then my last question is, how much money is currently sitting in the half cent sales, sales tax fund?
I think unallocated, I defer to city finance. I believe the unallocated portion's around fifty million, is that correct? Un- uncommitted? Okay.
Could you repeat that?
Seventy million.
Okay.
Is what city financed, uncommitted? What's the total balance that's including committed, remember? That's okay.
Do you need to respond or?
No.
Waiting on him, we're good?
Long as that answer was.
Okay, we're going to go to Counsel My Street and try to close it down with Counsel Forrest.
So I kind of heard, um, like, why would council come up here and even consider this, but they wouldn't consider the change in the half cent sales tax for the ten possible business, not ten possible businesses going on Pueblo Boulevard? In the development world, if you have purchased a property and you have a plan and you're into permitting and you're into developing your plan, you have already committed. So for us to go, and just, this is just for the public, for us to go and make a decision on giving funds to biz, potential businesses, and they're not potential because they're committed. They've bought their property, they know what their costs are. A good developer, before they buy a plot of land um, to develop on, is going to know what their costs are, or otherwise they're not going to invest. If they can't afford to complete that project, they won't be investing. And so this isn't meant for you guys, gentlemen, but I noticed that there was kind of like a little conflict of interest here on whether this was worth investing in. You're bringing potential businesses that haven't invested, they're considering investing here. And so what can we offer them? And that's way different than the criteria that um, was coming through the uh, change in the ordinance criteria. Um, if we're talking about ten businesses on Pueblo Boulevard, they've already committed to come here. They knew the costs of their development costs, an incentive to them, they've already committed. Why would we say, oh, hey, by the way, you're coming here, you've invested, let's give you two million dollars or let's give you five hundred thousand dollars. They've already committed to come here. This money was to go beyond that and reach outside of those who have already made their commitments to come here and get them, invest in what we need to invest to get, bring bigger businesses in. Not ones. And that's probably the reason why we're not, some of us are not for the criteria, the change in the criteria ordinance. I'm not interested in giving money to businesses that have already committed to come here. And so I'm just going to clarify that, because that was kind of a remark that needed clarification. Thank you, gentlemen, for being patient with that.
You want to respond?
No, I don't, I don't think it's, yeah.
Okay, Counsel Forrest.
If you'd like me to respond, but, but I don't think I need to, thank you, Counselwoman.
I, I think I heard after all of the percentages that were announced or discussed, that if we go ahead and we complete this project with the lift station and it costs us seventeen million dollars, that we will only be up to seventy percent of capacity. So this in no way, it gets us closer to eighty, but we're going to be at seventy once this project's completed approximately.
The one project, yes. I don't know what the other potential people, what the amount of water they will be discharging as well.
Right, right.
That's ama- that's making the assumption that, you know, the, with the design that we've been working with them is using that two million gallons a day number. The project is being proposed, not necessarily for that project's whole, that's kind of the parameter we've used. But hypothetically, a project like that moves forward, yes, I think, you know, we're not at capacity, certainly, but we're starting to butt up against that and we understand that.
Yeah, and then as far as what Pedco has done in the past, anticipating that there's opportunities out there, uh, we have for years, uh, built spec buildings, uh, which we had no firm person or company in mind. But we went ahead and built these things and they came, they, they, they produce really created opportunities uh, because they're now, I think most of them are filled. Uh, um, every spec building that we built, we were able to sell. And that, that's a good thing. Uh, on the issue of, of uh, this particular project with the lift station, it fits the criteria ordinance perfectly. That's what the money was intended to do as the voters voted for it and as we've been using it. The issues on Pueblo Boulevard is that they did not meet the criteria ordinance. And as we've been using it. The issues on Pueblo Boulevard is that they did not meet the criteria ordinance. Including infrastructure. So uh we're talking apples and oranges here and that was the reason. Uh, that uh we did not utilize uh any half cent sales tax. For the Pueblo Boulevard retail businesses that want to locate. Uh, the uh. There, there's a question now, uh, and I ultimately, we're gonna know next week whether or not we're going to expand. You know, the idea of the criteria ordinance to include. What I think is the biggest is, the, the reason this kind of exploded is the requirements that C dot is now requiring. And so a lot of the retail businesses on Pueblo Boulevard, they got nailed by C dot because C dot's expectation. Of how the allocation of costs on putting an extra lane or buying a, a traffic light, which are very expensive. And that, that was the hangup there and that's not gonna go away. We're gonna continue to bump heads with C dot. Uh, as, as we move along, but. Uh, given everything that's been discussed, I wanna move this forward. Uh, and uh. Whatever it takes, uh, whatever the next steps are, uh, we, we just need to, we need to move this forward. Because I think there's gonna be a lot more going on, on the south end of Pueblo. Uh, as we move along and I just, I don't wanna waste any time, more time on this than we have to. Cause we, we're talking a year and a half to two years.
Council Meister?
I would just like to move it along in the sense that we're gonna get more questions answered.
Sure.
And then once the questions are answered, then we just move, we're gonna move it along in little steps.
I understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else in council? Any other comments, Council, uh, Carlos, you got something else, Carl?
I just wanted to make sure that that's a consensus from council as a whole that they wanna go forward.
Okay, wanna? Council Latino?
I just wanna say Jeff, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
President Ayla, you got something?
Well, I'm, you know, I'm with Council Meister and Council Martinez. I have. I'm not convinced that wastewater shouldn't be included in the, in the deal. And I think that we ought to get real numbers on what the output's gonna be. Through that lift station and adding all those things in and, and at what capacity that takes wastewater. The worst thing can happen is you spend seventeen million dollars doing that, then they come back and say. Oh, well, it's way more than we thought it was gonna be. Now we're, we need another twenty-five million dollars to do a wastewater uh expansion. And now wastewater, because it wasn't included in this, has to go back to the ratepayers and say. Well, guess what? We're gonna have to do this and based upon uh all of this infrastructure that we put in. We need to raise your rates another twenty-five dollars a month or, or whatever that number is. I'm just pulling that out, out of the top of my, off the top of my head. And to consider that this wouldn't be part of an economic development plan, I, I don't think holds water. I think that. If you're expanding and you're creating this opportunity out at the, uh, uh, out at the Saint Charles ma- uh industrial park. And it creates this need within uh, uh wastewater to, to expand. I'm all for creating the lift station and making that happen, but I don't want to do it. Without knowing exactly what it's gonna, going to do to, to wastewater. So.
No, I disagree.
I wouldn't be supportive unless I had those answers.
No, I, and I don't disagree with you. That's why I think it's important to get it started so we can get those answers and that engineering stuff started so we can have better answers for you as we move it along. And I, I understand those questions.
If it makes it to eighty percent, then.
Oh, absolutely.
Then something needs to happen.
Yeah, I mean, in the perfect world, and I don't wanna say, you know, eh, you know, obviously there's the cost involved with it. And so when we've been working on projects with Pueblo wastewater. We've been keeping that in mind and trying to have, make sure those conversations are going so we know what potential it is. Um, but, you know, other than the cost, what a great problem for the community to have to butt up against that eighty percent, having to start the design. Because that, and that means that we're starting to see some substantial growth.
But it's not a good problem if you have to go back to the ratepayers and say, we gotta bump your payment a hundred dollars a month. But don't worry, we've created uh this deal out on the.
I'm not arguing that fact with you. I agree with you.
Okay.
It's gotta be development that the prospects have, the, the projects have to be able to pay for it. I get it. Yeah.
Okay, so let's go to Council Meister.
Um, so what we could figure in that is possibly, cause we can control, somewhat control that possibly. I don't know legally. And the cost to connect. Cause the fees to connect could be altered. Could they or could they not be altered to that era, area tying in, bringing that much flow? Into where we would need to potentially upgrade at some point?
I, I don't have an answer to that question tonight, but I can certainly, I can certainly look at it and we can bring that information back when we bring more information back to council.
Because that, because all of these people that aren't having to pay, all these potentials that aren't having to pay for the line. They could actually somewhat co- compensate back to that in the cost to connect. And if we could tailor those connection fees in that area, kind of like, oh, what do they call it? A uh, like a special, special fee. So that if we need to, um, it's special fee district to where if we need to upgrade at the plant. There is money that's coming towards that upgrade based off of whoever's tying into it because, you know. I mean, there's something, I'm just, I know you're, I know you don't have the answers.
I can, I can look.
I'm just saying, look at the potential of that, um, so that. Um, we don't get stuck with the ratepayers paying for it, cause the ratepayers aren't gonna pay for it unless it's being used. And it's being used because people are connecting into it. And so it could be like a special fee district, possibly. I don't know. Uh, that's just a food for thought in trying to make something work.
Well, on the industrial side, there's, there's, there's an expectation. Certainly, I don't wanna speak for the residential and the general business side, but on the industrial side of Saint Charles Industrial Park. Whoever ties into it, as they tied into it, without a doubt, there should be a reimbursement. There's a tie-in expense to do that. So they're not benefiting from it. They have to pay their portion of it as they tie into it. Without a doubt. So there's a reimbursement side of it as well.
Correct, but we didn't, we don't want just the reimbursement of the line. We have to upgr- you know, we'd like to actually benefit so that if we have to upgrade the plant. That those are covered.
Understand.
You know?
Part of those tie-in fees, there's a plant investment fee for all tie-ins for all users. No matter what size or scale they are, they have to pay a plant investment fee that goes to plant expansion. And upgrades the system. So, you know, it's a sent, you know, the more users you get, the more fee you generate for it. So that. It's, you know, it kinda helps pay for itself. And larger users pay a much higher cost, obviously, because they're using more water. You know, and, you know, these questions, you know, are great questions. And if we could start down the path to design, then we start to narrow those questions and answer some of those as we move forward. And even if we get to six months, eight months down the line and, you know, there are no prospects and we need to put a pause on the whole process. At least we've moved that far down the line. It's not wasted time or effort that we have some answers. So the next time we're not making estimations of two million gallons a day. We're estimating, that's what it needs to be over there.
Yeah.
We have better answers and we can start the design process of whether or not it gets built immediately or not. If, you know, nothing comes to fruition, which I hope that's not the case, cause I'd like to see additional jobs come to Pueblo, but. You know, we can at least start the path and understand that we've got a year to two years in front of us to get this to, from now to the approved and being built. That we have a lot of time to answer questions and we get, the more time we spend on it, the more answers we're gonna get. And we can narrow those costs down. We can see, you know, if we get a user that says we wanna come in and we need six million gallons, that's a whole nother conversation. Because that's a bigger number. Um, you know, we're looking at what the plant capacity is and what percentage we're using. I mean, it's a maybe a substantial water user. Just for this area, I mean, multiple water users to get to that number. So we're looking at a kind of a ceiling basis. Of what's worst case scenario, what we could have, not just what the bare minimum is. And whether or not, once we move down the design path and looking at it, there may be ways we could phase in, you know, the, the uh lift stations. Maybe it's not one massive one. Maybe it's two or three smaller ones that we bring online as demand goes up potentially. There's lots of options. Uh, but until we start down that path, we're just doing, you know, our best engineered estimates or guesses on what they could be until we start moving forward.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, that is a big question here on the dais is, well, what if we, you know, what do we do when we have to uh, um, upgrade the? And, but that's all about growth, right? Growth and development. At some point, we would love to upgrade the wastewater plant because we have that growth.
Yeah, you did, yeah. Four hundred, five hundred, six hundred new jobs. All of a sudden, you got more housing to be built. So now you've added not just there, you know, the plants. The industrial park taps, you got houses that would be announced. We're bringing population to the city. So then everything starts to benefit from it. So. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a problem we, we would have to face, but, you know, it's, you know, the city hopefully grows. Uh, we hopefully, you know, have an issue where we need to upgrade our sewer plan because we have a population growth. I mean, that's ideal for, I think, for lots of aspects.
And if, and in this plan, that's what we should be looking at, is the entire bigger picture of, okay, we have this growth. It, this is to, to accommodate this growth, but now we don't want it to say, oh, we got it. Now we, where are we gonna get the money to upgrade the plant? We can through special fees, if we, that's possible, prepare for that as they connect. So.
Especially in certain areas, if you so decide, you could do that.
Can I say something?
Go ahead.
Um, so depending on how big the lift station is built to. Um, right now, we keep talking about two million gallons and that's one prospect, but if you're talking about three or more million gallons, then. At that point, the state's gonna look at the site approval and start asking questions about treatability. Are we ready for the extra flow that's coming? And then at that point, they're gonna start looking at our permit and saying, okay. When are you guys gonna start design? So I just wanna keep that in mind, like, the one prospect is splitting our capacity in half. And so when you start adding more, then we start having to look at, you know, the different permits that are gonna um come into play as well. Because whatever the lift station's built to, we have to be able to have the capacity in the um infrastructure to take it. Which is the pipes. And then we also have to be able to, be able to treat it. And if in twenty years we're not, they're gonna ask. A lot of questions about, okay, when are you gonna upgrade the plant? How are you gonna do it? And then at that point, we will. And I don't know if the special district will keep up with that cost or if it'll actually be cost prohibitive for people to come in. Because when you upgrade a plant, it's really expensive.
You know, we just keep talking about growth though.
I know, yeah. And I'm not trying to discourage growth. I'm just letting you know that.
Best to look at the big picture, try to figures if we can, yeah, get some of that back.
Well, and part of, and, and, and it's not just, I mean, the wastewater and the water is not just done in a vacuum as we look at what the possibilities are for the park and as far as with the growth core. Because we're also having to balance it with the other utilities that are available. So how much electricity and how much electricity availability is gonna happen in that park in the next ten years? Um, what's the gas capacity? What's the workforce capacity? And so that's why I think when they ask the question, is it two million past that? Gets it very uncomfortable because we're gonna start running into issues on other utilities as well. So I think these will give us great questions. Great questions. I think the council's asked. I think this gives us direction on how we work with city staff and wastewater to put a better proposal and proposal and get the engineering started.
I, I think. Yeah, I think we're all uh talking about the same thing, needing additional information. So getting back to originally what I said. I think we need to start uh the process uh and that's going to address probably half the questions that were asked tonight. So I'm a yes moving forward.
Council Martinez? Council Meister?
Yes.
I'm no. Council, I mean, President Ayla?
Yeah, with questions.
Yes, with questions. Council Latino? Census vote is a vote in my brain. I can't, I can't get rid of. Yeah, we're gonna move it forward. Okay, Cal, uh, motion?
Mister Chair, I make a motion that we move into executive session for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters. That may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations. And or instructing negotiators under CRS sec- section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two. Parent four, parent E, parent nine. And the following additional details are provided for identification purposes. To discuss a potential Petco project.
Your second? Those in favor? Those against? You guys have it?
Oh.
It's adjourned and it's eight eight thirteen.
Eight thirteen.